I call this meeting to order and will you please join me in the pledge to allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alrighty, changes to the agenda. John?
I'd like to add a couple of nominations and one resignation to the consent agenda. For nominations, we have Jason Driscoll, part-time student services secretary, Cassandra Basso, JGS IA, Angela Tuero for RMS, fourth grade teacher, Margaret Jordan, RMS clerical aide, and also nomination of Taylor Fortado as a field hockey coach for JRMS.
Okay.
And then I'd like to add also the resignation of Gregory Hinkle, CHS assist teacher.
Alright, thank you. Um, can I have a second? Thank you Christine and all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Alright, so the consent agenda is updated, thank you. Any other changes? Alright. Moving on, public comments.
Alright, so the public comment policy for the district is currently, should be up on the screen for everybody. So feel free to read that before you make a public comment. First and last name, and if you could also provide your town or residence before commenting as well. And if you, if you're digital, just use the Henry's feature for us to be able to acknowledge you. Alright, I don't see anybody.
Okay. Um, just want to remind people too, I know sometimes we get the comment that when we have public comments, that we don't respond, and that's correct, we're not here to respond. We are here to listen. If you would like us to consider something and possibly get it on the agenda, then please contact the central office and get that information out or express your concern. And then we all have a chance to read it, think about it, and decide whether or not it's appropriate for our agenda. Alright, thanks. Okay, moving on, superintendent's report.
Thank you. So before I get into the main report this evening, just a couple of quick updates. Facilities wise, we have had some interesting things occur. So the, I sent an email out Friday with a little bit of conversation about the parking lots in this area. Basically, what ended up happening for is that we had to do some change orders in order to improve our situation. The parking lot actually straight out in front of us right here, so the high school, the main high school parking lot area, the underneath was solid clay all the way down. In the portions where that wasn't the case, it was actually pavement over pavement. So certainly, we didn't want to have in a couple of years more cracking as a result of, you know, the water not running off and having more freezing and things of that nature, so we're fixing that. And so that's going to take a little bit longer. Hopefully they'll be starting that work over there by late this week, maybe early next week. Currently, they had to do the exact same thing on the other side of the building, and that should actually be paved, I believe, tomorrow or the next day. And we'll continue on. Paving company's been great, they've been really easy to work with, and I believe they're going to be able to continue on the schedule that we have, even though it's gonna be a more aggressive timeframe now considering the scope for both RMS and this area right here. We're getting closer to having our HVAC project approved by the state. I signed another set of documents and named a clerk of the works. We can make that adjustment later if that doesn't work out, but we did find someone who was very well qualified to do that. And so moving forward with that, and I hope that this week we will find, once and for all, we'll have, I do have some, can kind of a contingent approval from the grant. The contact at the Department of Education, but certainly there's another individual who has to actually approve the project itself. So the grant funds are there, so they're approved if the project is finally approved, that's the idea. So that's what's happening there, we did have some, several people, I think the towns had damage, significant damage in Jaffrey, certainly I believe Ringe as well. People had, you know, flooding in their homes, so there, you know, we were not any different really in this area. Our SAU was damaged, the front area. We have a lot of remediation we have to do now of walls and carpets. And so we're working with our insurance company on that and with, you know, to get that all situated this week and next week.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about what you're just saying, thinking about the grade as it leads away from the building. It doesn't really kind of grade down, it kind of goes up first, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
There are a lot of-
Bigger fix going on maybe.
Yeah, there are a lot of neat. There are a lot of interesting things that we have learned, facilities wise this year, as we've tried to improve them.
Yeah.
So it's a lot of, lot of work. So the main part of my report tonight is simply just an educational report on where things stand around the country and around the state and the region as it relates to COVID-19, the Delta variant and any other variants that may come afterward. Certainly, the Delta variant is the one that more people are talking about. And it is stated, at least though not completely confirmed, that even those individuals who are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, tend to have the same amount of the virus, you know, within their naval cavities, nasal cavities as someone who is not. Therefore, they may not get sick or as sick as someone who is not vaccinated, but they certainly can spread it. Maybe perhaps just as easily. So that is, you know, certainly why there has been more conversation about school, going back to school, and what we should do to make sure that we're safe as we go back. So if you go to the first page of this, the first couple of pages is just straight out of our reopening framework for this year that we've already approved, knowing that it's a framework and that it's adjustable, and we even stated in there that it is adjustable. These two items, number one and six, these are the planning principles found on page four. Number one, the health, safety, and well-being of our school community is our number one priority. So when we make decisions, we think about that. It is important to note that health, safety, and well-being is not only physical, it is also social, emotional, mental health as well. Number six, all district decisions related to COVID-19 shall be guided by data, best practice, and state and federal guidelines through the lens of supporting the overall health and well-being of our district community. So if we go to the next slide, referencing page six of the reopening framework, just to highlight that we plan on operating under an in-person instructional model, full five days, going back to that. In all the documentation and the articles and so forth that are out there from all, you know, the CDC and everything, everyone's stating the importance of being in-person learning. And I think that goes to the well-being, both physically and emotionally. So that's important. So we don't have any plans to offer a separate remote learning option this year. We do have some neat goals, I guess, that have been set by some of the teachers in the school district to utilize technology in a much more meaningful and deeper way than perhaps they would have had they not gone through the pandemic situation of remote learning. But, and I think that will be good as we move forward, and we can talk about that a little bit later on today. Going on to the next slide. Also on page six, I just wanted to remind people who are watching and the board here that it is possible that changes could be made to this reopening framework prior to the start of the school year. Now, we're going to have a group of individuals who have already been, had their voice into this reopening framework. They're going to be meeting again next week sometime, and we'll be providing more information and more insight. And it's a good mix of individuals, people from the teachers' association, the administration, parents, community members, and individual from, who works over at the hospital as well, and our nurses, or a nurse, at least. Page five lists very similar to what we had last year, lists some, not necessarily all, but these are the ones that we do go to the most to find out what is happening. CDC certainly is a very popular one, the American Academy of Pediatrics was another one. New Hampshire DHHS, we sometimes refer to them as DPHS, and the Department of Education, and then NEA. Now, NEA and the Department of Education aren't health experts, but they do what we do here at the board level. They make statements either for the state or, you know, maybe a national group of individuals, some suggestions, and they base it upon whatever the other areas that we're looking at, sometimes the same data, you know, that we're all talking about. So the next few slides is just to look at what some of those organizations have recently stated. And so from the middle of July to really the end of last week, there have been some, there's been some new guidance that has come out from these various organizations. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention CDC has said there's indoors and there's outdoors, and that mask use is recommended for people who are not fully vaccinated, including teachers, students, and staff, except for children under two years of age. So they're recommending that all school-aged individuals and teachers, staff, and so forth, that if they're not fully vaccinated, that they should wear a mask. Now, there's also some language out there, I believe, that is saying that we're going to, you know, because of the fact that schools in particular are not going to be asking who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, and so forth, then the recommendation is that all wear masks. American Academy of Pediatrics kind of goes into that. So they say the same thing. Older than two years of age, and all school staff should wear face masks at school. The reasoning for that is a significant portion of the student population is not eligible for the vaccination, so anyone under 12. Protection of the unvaccinated students. Lack of a system to monitor any vaccine statuses. The fact that we're not even going to be asking or can't ask for that anyway. And the continued concerns for variants that are more easily spread among children, adolescents, adults. Basically stating that we're still in this, vaccination rates in some states, you know, are in the 30%. New Hampshire's better off than the majority of states, but probably the lowest in New England by a couple percentage points. So we're over 50%. Our region here, Jaffrey mimics the state, and Ringe is on the lower end, which mimics some of those states that are in the lower 30%, so vaccination. Go to NEA, what they have to say, they say something of a similar nature, recommending that at the very end, NEA supports robust masking policies that will keep students, families, and educators safe. Again, NEA is not an organization that, you know, it's an education association, but it's important to know what the education associations, I didn't see what AFT had come out, that's the other major bargaining group in the, in the country. But they're basing their information off of the American Pediatrics and CDC. The New Hampshire Department of Education and the DPHS or DHHS in New Hampshire, they've been less specific. They certainly, you know, leave it up to the individual to decide, they're not going, they're not requiring it, let's put it that way. They're not, they're not recommending a requirement for it yet, at this point in time. I did see on July 29th that WMUR reported that Frank Edelblue, who's our commissioner of education in New Hampshire, indicated that decisions should be made as close to a district start as possible. And the district should be flexible in how they're implemented. And he also made sure to state that protocols such as masking, social distancing, and so forth is a local decision that is also the conversation coming from the governor's office as well. So we are the local decision makers right here. Again, important for us to have that in the back of our mind, it does not appear as though our governor or the commissioner is going to make any recommendations that way. So if we look at New Hampshire data, just since this past week, once again, I went into today hoping that I'd have some information from today, but it was really from, I think, Friday. And they're not reporting information on the weekend, so this could very well be different at this point. Probably not lower, probably a little higher, is how it would go, since the trend is going that direction right now. You can see that that green is the vaccine, New Hampshire residents with at least one dose, and the blue there are the cases, the seven-day average. So since that, you know, it was going down as the kind of a direct correlation to the number of vaccines going up back there in that February to March timeframe, you can see it kind of the same slope or the opposite slope, I should say. And then, you know, starting to, however, even though we're kind of, we're kind of peaking right now, or flattening, or whatever you want to say, the numbers of cases are increasing again.
And are you, you're monitoring the local ones as well? Is that what next is?
A couple, yeah, yeah, we'll go into that, this is just another, that's alright, this is another view of the New Hampshire data on July 31st. You can see that it sections off into the little different colors by town. We are in there in the one to four range. Both Ringe and Jaffrey. And you can see that in the next slide. So Cheshire County, I mean, there are a couple of different pictures, we could have done Cheshire County or the greater Monadnock region, which does take a little bit of the Hillsborough County with it. And I think Cheshire County is a little higher than the greater Monadnock region right now, I think that was what it was this morning. I don't believe to see opposite. But as of the latest information we had, and I got this from WMUR, was that Jaffrey currently had between one and four cases actively, and Ringe the same thing, and that there were zero new ones.
Right.
So this would have probably been as of Friday.
As I say, this is changed, because earlier in the week, last week, I checked, and Ringe was zero, Jaffrey was one to four, so.
Yeah, in the prior week, I think that was even flip-flop.
But.
Yeah. So we've been hovering around that same area, which is not that different than what we were at the beginning of school last year. So in the summer and fall.
The statistics for Jaffrey from this, from the website, from the Hampshire COVID-19 dynamic site, has 44% of Jaffrey residents vaccinated and 34.5% Ringe residents vaccinated. Which this, the national average is 70%, we are quite low.
I don't think the, I don't think our national average is 70%.
69, I thought.
I think, I don't even think it's that, I went on it today, and it seems a lot lower, it's, yeah, Google, it's, I think it's in the fifth, it's like 50. So I'll be, I could be wrong, but we have a lot of states that are definitely in the 30s.
Yes.
And to get an average of 70 would be pretty impressive if that were the case, so I'm pretty certain. I know that the UK, they have, I was doing some research over the weekend, and they have a pretty high, I think it's like 65, I think they're in the mid 60s, and they were pretty happy with that. I think that would be, you'd be happy with that as well.
Okay, totally same for today, I apologize.
70 was what we want, we'd love to, you know, that's what they said we'd love to be at, would be 70, yeah.
49.6%.
Yeah.
It also depends on which age group they're including in the statistics, sometimes that really skews the statistic.
I was wondering about that, so the statistic, they're using their, it's residents. So the number of residents in Jaffrey was 5,200 approximately, and the range was a slightly higher number, 6,300 or something like that, but that includes all ages, I believe.
Yes.
So, yes, so all, that does skew it, everybody under 12.
So what you just read, it's 49.6.
Point six.
Is that?
It's-
Or not total?
Total, US population, sorry.
Okay.
That's nationally, that's nationwide, oh, yeah, eligible, it's a little higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, those are really important numbers to be aware, and I apologize for my inaccuracy, I sincerely heard.
Okay, keep going.
Alright, so that's just, you know, information, we have to keep on watching the trends like we did last year as well. And we do have some decisions to make going forward, decisions, of course, saying, hey, we could continue on where we're at, or is there something else that we need to do? And I think it's important that I threw this up, and the picture's not exactly, it's the best one I could find. But the idea of what is our risk tolerance, okay? You know, there is the argument to state that there's a lot of illnesses out there, people get sick, and they're going to get sick, and so, you know, do we, do we mask every time someone gets sick? What's the likelihood, so here's the, what's the probability if we did not mask, for instance? Because since I'm using masking, because that's the hot topic. It's what the Sentinel has called me about, it's what is going out there, and that all the, you know, different schools are talking about and so forth. And it's the change that has been made by some of these organizations, so that's why I'm using that. There are other mitigating factors or ways of going about doing things. But what's the probability that, or if it's high probability that if you, for instance, have no masking, what's the probability that you're going to have a lot of spread within your schools? Let's just say the schools, forget the community for a second. And then based upon that high probability, where are you with the impact of that? So is it, are kids having mild symptoms? And are, you know, are they being hospitalized, right, low to high? So we have to take those factors into place when we are thinking about what we want to do. You know, is there, we can, we can talk social emotionally with this exact same thing, with whatever decision we make, change the impact of what that would mean based upon the, kind of the outcomes that you're referring to. And those, that's, that's what we have to do in order to make good decisions. So for that matter, you know, we've already put inside our plan that we reserve the right, the ability to do some masking in different places and different times. And we used the word illness, we did not say COVID-19, we did not say the Delta variant, because we equally, and someone brought up last year, I think, a parent, and I thought was a good point, was we had 100 kids sick out of Ringe one time, it was during flu season. You know, we were looking at that, those numbers, and it started to go down again, so we chose not to, like, close the school. We talked about that here in a meeting, but when you see those numbers, for whatever the illness is, is it important to do something about that? So lots of things to think about, lots of things to consider. I don't recommend we make any decisions tonight, I think we need to let the process go forward. And to listen to people, I've received some emails already. And response to the email I sent out Friday, I think I forwarded those on to the school board already. If I get any more, I'll continue to do that, because it's important, it's important for people to know that, that when you do provide information to myself, that information does get to your locally elected officials, and they take everything very seriously, there's a lot of conversation that's taking place probably in your own heads, as well as with one another in here. So that's my report for tonight.
I also, I want to say, you know, I anticipate, just as last year, every meeting, we had a COVID update. Like, here's where we're at, does anything need to change with our framework, what's changed? Do we need to change something, where are we, that kind of stuff? I just anticipate, kind of from this point on, we're going to be having that again.
I can't imagine, unless, unless- I can't imagine that will not take place, so even if it were just a portion of the superintendent's report.
Yep, okay. Thank you very much, are there any questions, comments for superintendent on the report? Alrighty, oh, John?
I guess I will, I think that the discussion that Ruben just went through is the most important, but as long as we have no questions at the moment on that, Ruben, just you mentioned the facilities work that's being done at the beginning of your talk. I just was wondering if there's an update on the building committee and what's, what the plans are for that.
Yeah, sure, so we had a building, another building improvements committee meeting this past week. It was, you know, several people who had been there the first time were not there, but we did have a really good discussion. And the community members that were there provided a lot of good feedback. And then some of them that were, that were not able to come this past time, were able to come the last time, and had provided really good feedback, so we're kind of zoning in on some timetables and important things to consider. One area that seems to be coming up as a more, perhaps, I wouldn't say it's an emergency, I would say it's a need that we need to consider perhaps first before other major projects, is the bathrooms, the condition of them, the focus on privacy for all across the district, so finding a plan to do that. We had some discussions about the potential designs that the architect had for some of these bathrooms, and got some good feedback there, and I think that I'm planned on putting the minutes together with pictures and so forth today and sending it out to that group, I'll probably do that tomorrow, today got a little busy. But the, also the conversation went toward any sort of new construction. You know, there's a lot of conversation about facilities for the arts, for maybe STEM, for also athletics, and so improving those areas. And if there were, you know, some of the conversation went that we needed to have, number one, we need to make sure that we had everything, all our ducks in a row, to make sure that we were to look forward to building something new, or trying to build something new down the road, I'm not talking an entire school. We can talk about that if you want, after, after some of the things that we've had to fix. But if we do that, we want to make sure that we're in a, we're positioned for whatever building aid is out there, making, so the architect is working with us on that, giving us information about what we need to have as documentation and proof of keeping our facilities up to stop and so forth. And also, the second thing that we had to consider was, especially if we were looking at any sort of theater or auditorium or anything of that nature, that we also see how our relationship with community partners goes first, as the park theater had just gone in and seen how that, how that works out, or or doesn't meet the needs, either way, we need to, we need to collect that data before assuming, making assumptions. So that, those were the two major areas of conversation, there was some other conversation about some fields and, but that was very, that was minor.
Could I just follow up to, you mentioned STEM, but is that with building trades, I know there's been talk about making improvements in that area, we've been looking at that for a while, just wondering if there's any kind of a plan?
Yeah, I have another update, certainly. I don't know all the details, because I just got briefed on this about an hour and a half ago. We will be having a company come in and do the basic work needed for opening up the current building trades. Well, what, what is- uh, building trades, or, well, what, what is now construction trades area? So the walls, um, we got some approval to go forward, you know, we met with building inspector and so forth. Uh, so that will be done, um, some, at the same time, those same people will probably be helping, uh, with the, in the construction where we had to remediate the walls and because of the flood damage. And also while they're here, put a door between two of the rooms so that as we, uh, implement some more programming, there's the ability to go back and forth between rooms in, in one of our areas of the school. So that's kinda the idea, but the, that specific space, I think this week or next week, they should have it won't take them long, just the removal of some of those wall spaces that are there so that the new teacher will be able to have eyes on every aspect of the room. Um, as for any major items about that, you know, to construction, like ventilation and things like that's gonna have to come down in, into other conversations.
Okay. Thank you.
And we are not planning on doing anything new to the floor, making, I mean, it would be nice to have a nice, clean, uh, looking surface, but it's certainly not necessary for what we need to do. The floor is in good shape.
Probably not a lot of time this year.
It, we don't have the time to do that anyway.
Will, will that be something that we're looking at as we go forward in terms of?
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot to have a conversation. We have a lot of conversations that we need to have about five-year planning with comes to facilities. From flooring, flooring is an important thing. I think, uh, we've been talking about that for a while, but certainly when you get carpet absolutely destroyed by water and then things like mold and, uh, you know, comes to you get to rip it up, it's important that we, um, have materials that are a little bit better and require so much maintenance. And certainly, as we talk about health and wellness, doesn't hold allergens. And it's easier to clean. Uh, so that's something, um, along with the bathrooms and, um, those are, those are, those are big areas, so things like that.
Alright. Alright, that's it. Then we'll move on. Again, thank you. Alright, we're to the consent agenda. And we've already had additions to that, so now I need a motion.
To accept the consent agenda?
As amended?
As amended.
Thank you. And I need a second. John, thank you. Um, all those in favor? I opposed abstain. Alright, it passes six zero zero. Alright. Um, right, so the discussion volleyball.
So I asked if Heather Lindstad could be on tonight. I don't know if she is.
Yes.
Um, and then, so what I would do is, well, she is a resident of Jaffrey, so she can, you know, speak if you would give her permission, but also, you know, I was, I was gonna ask if, if she could speak to this.
I was thinking that she was the presenter of what this discussion content was.
Well, if she couldn't make it, then I was, but, but I would, I would prefer to have, uh, Heather, Heather who brought it to me, yeah.
Alright, I'll, I'll put her up on the screen in the main room and then promote her so that she can be heard. So Heather, you're getting pushed through. Alright, Heather. Oh, okay. I was gonna say at this point, you should be able.
Alright. Hello, good evening. Um, yes, I, I guess if we wanna talk about volleyball and last year we, um, had some of the best numbers that we've had for a club. Both that, um, well, when we first started it, it was joint. Last year, we had such great numbers for the high school. Um, that we allowed them to have their own team, um, and at JRMS, um, our numbers were even better. Uh, we run that as co-ed, um, to see, you know, to let everybody participate. And I think for co-ed team, we had sixteen girls and four boys. But as far as the high school group, um, we got very fortunate if we wanna find, um, positives with COVID. Uh, because there was no, um, formal schedule for any school. Our team was able to, um, get a few scrimmages in. And, uh, so we got to play keen, we got to play scenic. Uh, the girls did very well. Although we didn't have shirts for them, so the referee, um, went off and, you know, yelled at our coach, um, even though it was a scrimmage, so, um. But that being said, again, the numbers already with family ID, um, our numbers are for registration are there. Um, and so unfortunately though, we need to be a sub varsity, so a JV team, we need to be designated that, and that's what we're asking permission. Uh, not a varsity pro, but, and it won't cost us any fees or anything to register with the NHIA. It will be nothing additional. But saying that we're a sub varsity will allow us to play games, um, and we're looking for four to six games. Again, probably against Messina, Keen, local things, um, against their JVs. If we're not considered a sub varsity, unfortunately, um, then they could only scrimmage, but, um, every team is only allowed one, so we really wouldn't be able to play. And, and certainly the other teams like Akeem and Messina would be asking to scrimmage us before their, uh, season officially started. So technically, that would only allow us to play maybe the first week, second weekend in September. Um, and only get one or two games instead of the four or six that we're looking for. As a sub varsity, um, we'd let the program run, so it would start early September. And they would be like our other fall sports and, and, um, third to fourth week in October.
So you said it wouldn't cost anything to, to join that, um. I'm assuming we would want some sort of uniforms?
Yep, and, and we have that, um, I, I've got a budget for that in a little bit that, that we could do that. Uh, of course, we're not gonna make a uniform, but, um, I've talked to, um, our advisor slash coach who's been doing it for the last two years. Um, you know, and we'll work with, um, Principal Dustin, just a simple logo and numbers so that, so that the coach doesn't get yelled at, but, uh, we'll keep it very simple. Uh, it wouldn't be a, a full-fledged uniform and those kinda things. And with some of that anyways, um, that would be some of the girls anyways, um, already invested in, you know, the shorts that, that they wear, um, because they wore them last year, so, um. And then going forward from this, again, obviously, we're looking at statistics and then we would, um, you know, again, before the budget, probably, uh, talk to the board and put in some monies or look for monies for future, for future years and growing the program.
So. Discussion, thoughts?
I think it's great. I mean, more opportunities to provide, uh, for athletes, I think it's great.
Yeah. More opportunity to develop athletes. It's great. Okay, thank you, Charlie. John?
I mean, I would echo what Charlie said. I, I think that volleyball is great and, uh, grateful to Heather for kind of shepherding this and making, you know, bringing it forward.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you. Others? Kristen?
I, I echo as well, any the more opportunities there are for kids to choose a sport that is more particular to what they like, that allows them to be an individual, really helps the, the child, the learner blossom into, I think, a healthy adult. So I appreciate new sports, new clubs. You've done a wonderful job bringing many new activities to our school district, and this is another example. I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
First one. Great, good.
Yeah.
Uh, just briefly, Nick and I and a couple others were having a conversation with one of the Sentinel reporters today about, uh, what are some things that we, you know, would do post, you know, last year for social emotion? Mid-pandemic, I don't know, um, post the situation that, yeah, remote learning and so forth from last year. Uh, what we were planning on doing to help with, um, both academics, but also the social emotional, and we had indicated that one of the items that we had going on was, uh, that we wanted to, our goal was to actually during the time last year, which was very difficult, was to actually increase the numbers of clubs, increase the number of people involved in uh, activities. And so this is an example of, of one of those very successful clubs that, uh, is likely to be sustainable and keep on going. And it does serve a, a different population of individuals, some, some people who are not interested in soccer, you know, or, or, so they maybe perhaps would not be doing something active. If they didn't wanna track or soccer or whatever else was being offered in the fall. So, um, I think it's good.
So, um, we've been asked for an action by Heather.
I'm gonna motion.
Okay, Charlie.
Change her, uh, we're just talking girls or we're talking all?
Right, you know, it's just for the girls this fall, um, and certainly, again, Charlie, this is something that I think, um, boys, you typically play, uh, volleyball in the spring, so, um, I'm gonna bring it forward to, um, our students, um, for the boys, i- if they would, if we could get more numbers and make it a club sport in the spring is my goal. Uh, but it's for the girls right now to be able to play, um, a sub varsity, um, season, or at least get the games that, like we said, four, four to six, it's not a full season, but it's just something to move them forward in, in the direction.
Okay, so I'm back to motion that we, uh, have our girls' club volleyball team, uh, become a JV team or a sub varsity team. Be at that level.
Wonderful, thank you. And I need a second. John, thank you. Alright, all those in favor?
Hi.
I opposed abstain. And we have JV volleyball for girls, six zero zero.
That's terrific, thank you.
Awesome.
So we got diggers and setters and strikers and kills and all that stuff.
And we're looking for an assistant coach, Charlie. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Alright, excellent. Thanks so much.
Thanks for all you do, Heather.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
And I'm gonna kick you back to attendee.
Yep.
Okay. Next up on our agenda is five-year plan.
So I'll start off by saying that, uh, this Friday, maybe Saturday, but this Friday and Saturday, you'll be receiving a digital version of the draft that we have going on right now. Uh, hopefully, it's still being cleaned up and different individuals are assigned different portions of the plan. The plan will include, it will be very, it'll be very in-depth in the areas of, um, academics and social emotional, um, and will have and actually safety as well, um, pretty significant there with some reasonable depth with technology and probably not as much depth with facilities, meaning there'll be a place for the facilities that, that needs to be its own plan that probably, you know, just, uh, helps support the rest of the plan, basically. But this presentation here, I feel, because we have some new people on the board and also even those who have been on the board, just to kind of look at the work that's gone along and the purposefulness as we've gone through, and, and we've also had some difficulties as we go through, um, that it's all kind of going in the direction that, um, we want it to, as long as we're able to be successful this year and in another good year of implementation of the various, uh, things that we've started. So just back in two thousand fifteen, uh, when I first was here, this was the summer of two thousand fifteen, so it was a two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Um, started off with asking each school group of teachers, what do you envision in five years? What would, what would you hope this district would look like or be like? What would your school be like? What would, what, what would the district, if everything was the way you feel it should be? In two thousand sixteen, we sent a survey, so same year, but just a different time of the year. Sent a survey out to the community and also went around, actually in person, just to try to have kind of these forums wherever I could to get any information. Um, all of this is qualitative data, um, just really asking very similar questions. Two thousand seventeen, October, and then, then it was, uh, December eighteenth, I believe, when it was turned into policy, was the strategic design work. And then two thousand eighteen, we started to make some shifts structurally in order to make sure that some of the strategic design work or outcomes could become possible. So we had some administrator role shifts at the middle school and high school. We, you know, changed the models, a lot of model changing during that timeframe. Trying to get more consistency and communication and collaboration between the middle school and the high school during that timeframe. Next year, trying to make sure that we're setting the, uh, supports for better communication between Ridge Memorial School and Jeffrey Grade School. Yeah, that assistant principal and that person's been good to help increase the, um, one, the uh, administrative capacity, two, just making sure that team is more of a team approach, and I think that's, that's really good. And someone who has eyes on every week, both places, and there was a dynamics in both locations. That's where it's been very helpful. And then two thousand twenty, we had COVID-nineteen. That was not something that we planned at all. But it was kinda like we did, um, with some of the strategic design work and some of the professional development and some of the work that we had done. We were well-positioned to doing, I think, very well. Doesn't change the fact that it was difficult, but through that adversity, we continued to grow. Through that adversity, we grew clubs. You know, we grew things, we, we grew in our ability to instruct differently. And, um, I think we ru- ruined our ability to communicate. I can't say that was not always fun, but I think that, you know, with every difficult situation we had, we had to debrief and say, how could we do this better? What can we do better? What do we need? What do we not need? Or, or, you know, what do we not have? For instance, we are, because of this pandemic situation, we are both in person and we're live and we have great equipment that we were able to get through some grants and it's, it's changed how we do business for the better. Two thousand twenty-one. We're gonna be implementing five years of an action plan. Call it an action plan rather than strategic plan. We already have the strategic design. So this is just an action plan that helps make that come to fruition. Um, it's important to note that though there are a lot of element, I mean, this is like fifty pages right now of a plan and it, it's gonna be more detailed, probably hover around that. Our goal is to make it as readable as possible to an educator, they're gonna understand to a non-educator, we've got to work on getting something that's gonna be, uh, easier to understand. But, uh, many of these things that we're putting forward in this five-year plan actually are already moving, we're already been moving there. Many things are already in place, uh, some more at some schools than others. But because we've had success with some of the things that we've implemented in, say, the secondary school, we're able to now transfer that over or translate that over into the elementary and I think help support that school in a better way. But we'll go back to two thousand fifteen. Cause I think it's important to recognize that the path we are on is the path that we've always wanted to be on. And not that it's ever easy, it's just not. And it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of patience, it takes a lot of communication. And it takes making a lot of mistakes along the way. But this is a picture. We were, I asked the teachers at all the schools to both put into words what they wanted to see and then also as pictures. What this, you know, what it would be like for the school to be the way it, what they want it to be. So you can see up there, someone drew, um, stars and kids are reaching to the stars and they've got better technology, increased collaboration, critical thinking skills, community. I see what I have here, community involvement, small class sizes, school day structure changing and, um, project-based learning. All those things, or the majority of those things are items that you would find within strategic design. All those things, or the majority of those things are items that you would find within strategic design. This is two years before that. This is another picture, if we go to the second one. These were done at the high school level, I believe, and they, it's a picture of a learner. On a tight rope. I think this was a health and wellness, but no, I'm just. Their idea was that we wanted to give them the tools, whatever that thing is, that the, the balance beam that they're, they're holding. To, um, be able to find their way across to reach their goal, but also have a safety net underneath. And then similarly, on the other side, we got those people, those teachers down there, they're helping, they might. You can envision, perhaps they lifted that person on and they, but, um, helped them. Get up a little bit higher and now they're just kind of at the point where this gradual release of responsibility. They're now the spotters, right? The student still might struggle or might fall down, but they're there to make sure that they can get up and, and. Keep on climbing that ladder. The ladder to, to somewhere. And these were some pictures from the Ridge Memorial School and the Jeffrey Grade School. Um, just, you know, things that they mentioned, uh, child-centeredness, which is at the core of our strategic design. Um, community, collaboration, creativity. Unified curriculum, small class sizes, technology, critical thinking. And if we go to the next slide. The items that the teachers from across this district, those six years ago. Came up with were right here, um, the things that were repeated. At least a few times. Uh, across the district. So co-teaching, you could put that into inclusive education, inclusive learning. Collaborative learning, same type, sort of thing. Employee retention, this has been a goal of the school to start employ, you know, making sure that we're retaining good teachers and employees. Outdoor learning. I mean, uh, last year, we had some great outdoor learning going on and it's gonna continue on. Competency-based options, that's a broad category. Teacher input, participation and ownership intervals for running the district. Um, this is something that we've been working toward with the Leadership Academy, the development of the teams. Uh, for the curriculum, which is actually decision-making at the SAU level. No other school in this region is doing that. We're not doing it. But we're getting there and we're working toward that. And it's not a criticism of other people, but it's showing that we take the input that we have received. Um, and we're. We believe in that and we're trying to make it happen. Community support and involvement, consistent case two twelve curriculum planning. Uh, technology, at that point, we just wanted it to be adequate. We've, we're in a good, we're in a good position. We can always be better. I mean, that's why we need to keep on planning for that. Wide range of extracurricular activities for all. We've been working on that. So you'll see that these are things that they said well before. Several of us were on the board, um, at the beginning, bef- two years before the strategic design, these are the things that, oh, birth to five learning. I mean, I, I remember talking to the Sentinel. Reporter today and said, you know, our board was pretty progressive in going for full day, four-year-old preschool. That's a big deal. You know, I say, let's continue, but that's a, that's a really big step. Uh, I realize that's not totally birth to five, but that's in that category. Two thousand sixteen, community surveys, there were three themes that came out. Um, they had different things to say about the different schools. We don't need to get into that necessarily, but. We, they wanted to, they wanted consistent high levels of learning. They wanted outcomes. And so I think that's something we want. They want us to take care of the facilities. We've certainly had, had our. Share of conversations over the last couple of years about this, but we've, we're, we're plugging away at it. And then involve the community in the educational process, which is exactly actually what the teachers were talking about as well, having that community involvement. They might have very. Maybe some different views of what that would look like, but still, it's about making sure that the community in the school. Is not just acting in separate directions. Two thousand seventeen, we get into the strategic design where we focus on the spheres of living for our learners. Create visions for each of those for, uh, several different areas. And then two thousand. Twenty-one, we'll jump there to, these were all kind of planning or surveying sessions to the action planning for the five years. And what the group did, um, who worked on this at the very beginning, which was the set of administrators. Uh, taking all this information together, condensing the strategic design into two pages. Set these goals that kind of cover those areas. We have goals for the learner and the learning. Using the language of the strategic design curriculum instruction and assessment, taking those three visions and sticking them all together as we've learned. Just from our pilot of the CIA team that you can't separate them. And we shouldn't be talking about them in separation. Personnel, stakeholders, and then learning structures. In a nutshell, this plan that you'll be receiving and we'll talk more about and then. You give us feedback and we'll continue to revise before the sixteenth. Where I'll ask for some kind of conditional support on it basically, because you may have things that you still wanna see change. Uh, through that, but just like kind of a blessing, like go ahead with these areas, um, or how stop in another area. It's, it's really, this whole plan is about learner-centered collaboration. So you'll see a strand through all of this that it's all about team. And that none of this can actually be accomplished by any individual and there's really not much that any individual is expected to do. By himself or herself through his entire plan with the exception. Of some personal responsibility around learning the, how to use a learning management system over several year period of time. So Otis was what we chose, that's. There's some definite individual work that would have to be done there, but supported by, uh, other individuals in the district and with professional development. So that's, that's probably a new lift for certain. Uh, curriculum instruction assessment, teacher leadership, cultivating that, giving people more opportunities to grow is kind of. What that summarized as and culture, climate and safety. So, some specific action items. You've seen that picture perhaps in a earlier superintendent report, if not, threw it up there anyway. There is, uh, some focus on habits of mind, but a narrowed focus. It's important to say that it's a narrowed focus because we started. In two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, talking about sixteen different habits of mind and teaching that and. You know, if we don't narrow and go deep, we're not gonna accomplish anything. And so that is similar to what we're focusing on and, and shifting toward, um, more so. In academics as well. And so even our conversations this summer, um, with some of the groups, the middle school math team in particular. Um, we've been talking about those essential standards with essential, um, competency areas. And making sure that we go deep. With them and not so broad and expecting that we have to get everything. We do need to accomplish, I mean, cover what we need to accomplish, but we need to go deep with the learning. So the specific action items really centered around, uh, I mean, a big one is multi-tiered systems support for behavioral health and wellness. That's important. I know we started this with the, you know, around the time of the early pandemic. You know, perhaps it made it more important, but that was something that we were working on doing anyhow. We had had conversations well in advance of. The importance of social emotional support for our learners. Um, and that the trends throughout society were going to get here and, and, um, so we believe that we need to continue on with that. And that's a district-wide approach. There are other groups that are working on the grant and they're doing a, a school here and a school here. We don't believe that's very effective for our particular. Um, district, we need to make sure that we're building capacity all the way throughout at these, simultaneously. It will take us four years. It's not gonna be, one of the, the benefits of having a five-year plan is that you're communicating. That when you implement something, it's not, we implement it in a year and then we go on to the next thing. It's that we're implementing. Or piloting and then we're improving and we're getting better and we're getting better. And you can be assured that we're not gonna go away from something that we're implementing onto some new. Um, type of approach that, oh, here we go again. We knew it wasn't going to last. We want lasting practices. Uh, all of them based on research-based best practice. Uh, we're gonna aggressively work through, if at all possible, the, the finishing and finalizing those scales, the curriculum documents. All the way through in all areas that will be done through K twelve collaborative teams. Um, some of that work will start in the first four days that we have together. Personal learning plans, that's something that we just implemented. We've been talking about personalized learning for quite some time and the idea of personalized. Learning plans and pathways. Um, the personalized, the idea of a personalized learning plan starts pretty concretely in the elementary and works its way up to being a tool for. Um, learners to choose how they wanna go about doing things and creating their own learning experiences. So when we started talking about customized learning and I. Don't wanna use that word as much, but the idea of customized learning, um, was that. Kids were gonna be able to customize their own learning experiences. Well, it doesn't just happen. And so there's a lot of work that has to be put into place by, you know, eight to, to ten years of. Um, parent and school involvement back and forth to help learners kind of know where they want to. Um, choose and the, and then to build opportunities along the way, give us feedback in the process of how we can continue to build our own system to help make that happen. So again, implemented last year, we're not done and it's gonna take years, but gosh, it will, it will never stop. So it's, it's the next decade of, it's not gonna be covered within these five years here. It's gonna be a decade to twelve years of seeing it all the way through. To know how it really works. Um, they made this law or mandated this in Vermont. We're doing it a little bit differently, not quite like they do it. Inclusionary practices. Community partnerships, I mentioned Otis, safe and healthy learning and living. Um, a lot of items that we're working on and safety, some things that, uh, we're all, we've already talked about, others that. I think Lou is currently working on getting grant funding for. To, uh, from the, we were gonna go to the feds, we decided that that was not the way to go. The Department of Ed evidently had. Quite a few funds that haven't been accessed and they're a lot easier to get a hold of. We've learned the hard way perhaps that getting money through the federal government sometimes is, uh, quite the process and is, has a lot of, uh, red tape. So going on to this last slide over here, this is just taking that. Matrix of ideas and thoughts that the teachers had six years ago. When asked, talk together, get in your groups, what does it look like? What does it feel like? What's happening in this district? And so, red up there, uh, doesn't mean we're done. It means we've really addressed it. And that we just need to keep on improving. And better communication, we actually do have decent, uh, quantitative data currently coming in. On the improvement or people's perceptions of our communication since the beginning of our communication planning that we did. Um, we will share that out probably in a couple of weeks, some of that information. Um, because the date for the feedback is past this date right now. Um, but coming in already, we see, um, significant improvements. Did you want, uh, did you wanna say something real fast about that, Nick?
Yeah. So, um, our last survey was in twenty eighteen, um, so about three years from our current survey. Uh, within the period of, we sent out on Friday evening, we already have more responses to this survey than we did in the lifetime of the twenty eighteen survey. It's already a better response rate. And, uh, one of the goals that I had with the survey was to mimic a lot of the questions that we had from last survey. So that we could cross compare the two. Um, there's one question that specifically is, here are some categories of communication. Do you agree that we're doing this well? Are you neutral or do you not think we're doing this well? We had, I, I think there were nine or ten content areas and four of them were disagree. Uh, in twenty eighteen, we don't have a single category right now where the number one answer is disagree. A lot of them are now. Switched over to, uh, agree. And the only one that we're really receiving kind of any. semblance of kind of a negative answer would be the website, which hopefully we're addressing by the end of the month. So hopefully that last step will be. Completed and people, you know, obviously the point of the survey was to get more data as to what we can do, you know, moving forward, but we have seen. Data to show that we have an improvement.
We're gonna get the data to inform the next iteration of the communication plan. Um, the communication planning group, which it's been very difficult to meet during the summertime, people's schedules are very busy. But before summertime, their focus, I, I would summarize as getting the kids involved in. Making the next level of communication come to a reality. So that'll be interesting to go forward. Community support and involvement, I think that our community, I mean, different people would view this differently, but I do think that. Um, I can say that during my time here, I felt that the community has supported, uh, we've definitely been involved. Haven't always been, uh, comfortable involvement, but it's been involved, um, but it's been good and it's always helped us grow regardless of. The, how, how things happened. But community support, when you just think of just the budget in general, we passed, you know, six budgets. We've passed two long-term collective bargaining agreements. For teachers, we've, uh, three for JRSSA. We've, you know, we've been successful with some building projects. We've done a lot of things. This community stepped up. That's not easy. Not every community can say that. So I'd like to keep that trend going, but you know. Uh, society and difficulties, you know, it, it, you know, it makes it hard on everyone. So we have to continue to work together to, to keep. Meeting our goals that we wanna do going down the road. Technology, we've made up big strides in that. Um, well-funded increased pay, again, it depends on who you're talking to, but we have data that shows that we're competitive within the region. Anyway, and in many ways, at the, at least at the beginning step, we're well above people. We're at the end step, we're right on track with people and we have a, you know. There's a few blips here and there, um. Up and down where different other schools in the area have different kind of styles of how their step processes go, but we, we do pretty well and we wanna certainly not lose that. Um, and administrators, our administrators are hands-on right now in the building and it's getting more so that way. And that's good. Uh, where things are addressed in the, sorry, in process right now currently would be in those yellow areas. Uh, they're just gonna always be in process. Uh, high employee retention, I'll say in process, meaning this is the first year that. I felt we had a very small turnover, I say turnover, uh, professional staff anyway. This would not include retirements. Or any perhaps other, you know, choices like if, if the, you know, the school board. You know, and the administration working together, if we had requested people to go in different direction, but for per people's own choice to be here. Um, we've, you know, we haven't had too many, um, resignations, I think two, maybe three, and that's, uh. It's not a trend, it's a data point. So we don't, we won't have a pattern for two to three more years out. We'll see if that continues. And then. In process. I'm sorry, addressed in a plan are those other areas right there. So, uh, I said fewer staff reductions, that was an interesting. One, I threw it up there because I think it's always, it's what they said, it came across, uh, I think that it was probably tied in with perhaps. High employee retention, but they don't necessarily mean the same thing all the time. So, uh, fewer staff reductions, I say many factors dictate the situation, um, because. How staff reductions take place could be budgetary, could be programmatic, um, reductions and so forth. It, it can re-rate, it can relate to numbers of students and so there are a lot of factors that come into play. Um, and so it's not. Uh, it's an area where I would say, um, our plans don't necessarily address. That because I think that's situational often. Questions, comments, thoughts?
I, I, um, tonight we received the newest. Iteration of the student, um, activities, um, extracurricular handbook. And when I look at this and it, you know, the. Expectations for students are, and teachers are clear, consistent and fair. I, I think everything has been. Moving forward and evolving and I, I could see even some of the changes that have been made from last year and the previous year and the previous year even in that. And that's important that we're consistently holding people to clear, um, guidelines and, and so I do think that. Part a lot of this is ongoing and, and should be, right? That's, we want. Our community to see us evolving, going positively forward. So I, I think we have some tangible. So I think we have some tangible examples, I don't think they're demonstrated like I just did, but we see that in the program of studies and, you know, other people, other things. There's lots of ways we can do bullet points to actually show the progress that has been made. And it takes an awful lot of effort by the administrators and the teachers and everyone to make even incremental changes. The, the discussion that has to happen even in a paragraph of a handbook, sometimes. And I applaud them for that continuous tenacity to make it better.
Any other thoughts or comments around?
Very much, I'd just like to say I very much appreciate the update. And, and all the work that's obviously gone into this for quite a long time. I, I recall that one of the benchmarks that was talked about a lot before the strategic plan was put into effect, and when you first arrived here, Ruben was our desire to see our, the competency of our students as, as reflected in standardized tests, see them rise and in comparison with the region and with the state and yeah, I realize too, looking at the work that we've been involved in, you've been involved in, in the staff, that is not just issues relating to standardized tests, there's a lot more that you're trying to achieve in terms of changing culture. I mean, you've really done this, but you know, we see places where you've really are moving forward. Are there any areas where you think that you're, you're really still need to get more traction?
Oh goodness, so many. I think anything that's addressed in that plan there is definitely where we need to gain a lot more traction. If we're going to get specific about more traction, when I look at consistent K through 12 curriculum planning. One thing that we did this year already the summer was I, for instance, I'll, I'll take a small group, we, we started with a small group so that we could kind of create a little bit of a model, so that we take it to some other groups. But I met with the middle school math team, they were very excited about looking at their data. And seeing what they could do to make some improvements. They looked at the data. And it's, it's a little lower than in past years, you know, one can understand that's probably the case almost across most places right now. But they didn't have a mentality of, oh, that's okay. It was a mentality of, this is not at all acceptable. And so, one awesome. I didn't, I wasn't me going, it is not acceptable, it is them who said, no way, is this going to be okay? And so we spent some time planning and they put together a plan, I'm not going to, I, it's not completed yet, I don't want to share it up there, but there were some elements of that plan that go along with, however, something that, yeah, six years ago, we wanted to see some results from the standardized assessments. That has always been an important thing to do. It is not the end-all be-all for any, by any stretch of the imagination, but it is an important data point, and it is important if our learners do understand the material, they will do well. As a whole, we have enough individuals to balance that out and do well. So there will be outliers, always. So one thing that they did was they put a goal in place to have their school grading, and we've talked about this for years, that their grades within their classes, that they are going to be eighty percent in alignment with the state assessments this coming year. That doesn't mean, by the way, that they'll all be proficient, but it means that they're, how they're conveying what students are knowing to both the students and to their parents should be more accurate with what the parents see when they get their report card and when they get their child's assessment results. What that also, in order to do that, however, several things have to fall in line. One, the assessment and what is expected has, you have to have your progressions aligned properly, you know, I mean, just the content, that's relatively simple to do, but the depth of that content, and that was something that we identified within you know, three hours that we were we were way off. And I suspected that was the case, but then again, they came up and realized that, which was good. And so to, so there's work actually going on right now to align all that in, in just the right way. And we've got some good resources for that. Another thing that they felt needed to happen, and even though it's a bit of a jump and it's a little bit more work, perhaps at first. Because their greatest concern was the communication between families and home, when you start to raise the expectations and then when parents are used to their kids getting maybe As or Bs, and maybe it doesn't come in the same way. The easiest way for them to make this happen was to pilot a different grading system. So out of the school, since we want to go to a more proficiency-based model. And we already have in our policy that we would go that direction, it's all spelled out. So it's fine for them to do, they wanted to be the first ones to do this year long. That's that's commendable. But, and it's going to matter, it's going to make a difference. All of that work is going to make a difference, plus there are a variety of other things like, you know, action steps when learners are taught the material and they're assessed and they're shown that they don't know the material, the way we would want them, what then? And so there were a lot of great ideas and you know, I won't go into it all, but, but just, it was really solid. A lot of good energy behind that. One thing that we'll be doing is we'll be utilizing our technology better. This is one of those areas that I talked about, you know, pre, pre-pandemic, we probably wouldn't have gone this route, you know, we've been using some Engage New York or the Eureka math curriculum, for instance. What happens when you utilize a book, when she's a workbook, it's not textbooks, but workbooks. You sometimes go get into the rut of going page by page by page and not getting to where you need to be and perhaps losing some learners on the way who already get the information, and so one of our teachers has already himself, and he took this initiative on his own, piloted going completely digital with the exact same curriculum at the high school level. And so he's going to be working with the teachers to do that exact same thing at the middle school level, same curriculum. We gotta get perhaps a, you know, some software licenses that would use tools similar to the actual state assessment, so they'd have practice doing a lot of things on the Chromebook that they actually take the assessment on as well. So that's, that's a kind of a side benefit. You know, that's not why we're doing that, we're doing it because this is, you know, this is the tool we gave them. They have access immediately, hey, I'm, I'm trying to figure this out, hey, click on this link and there's an explanation how to do that, or you know what, you need some remediation, MobiMax has this, you're, it's all there at your fingertips, doesn't mean that they're not going to be writing things down, of course, you're going to be having a notebook like this that has graph paper and so forth and doing that, but they don't need to carry, you know, two or three books around and lose a book and, you know, it's always going to be there, it'll be there no matter where they go, because it's all cloud-based. And so that's some work that they're doing, and we're going to get PD on it, so that, though, but that's, that's middle school math. That's like one area, so we're, you know, that's not even every, so much work goes into what, what is done, and the teachers are just doing an amazing job, and I'm really proud of that group because it's probably the area we have struggled the most in. Probably, it's probably the area that everyone struggles, most, most places that have a a middle school, not connected to their elementary, a Kates are different, they have different kind of data, but six to eighth or seventh and eighth, you know, they struggled, math is a struggle, and it's almost always you see that dip in sixth grade. And so for next year, the goal is there's no dip. It seems like a low goal, it's actually a very high goal. So that's, it's going to be, it's going to be good, I'm excited about the work that's going to take place.
Any other questions or comments on this overview of the five years?
The only other comment I have is that, yeah, this is a district, you know, plan, but it goes to the point where it's a, this, it's an action guide, it's a, because there's more, there's deeper planning, there's more planning at the school level. And then at the grade level and at the teacher level, I mean, it gets, it's a a fifty-page document might seem big, you know, the reality is it's over a thousand. When you get the layers, yeah.
With this fifty-page document with it, and I'm looking at the previous slide, the specific action items. Does this document and does the intent include what the evidence will look like to say this is, that this is successful? What outcomes you're actually looking for, like, okay, here we've met our goal, this is what we're looking for.
Sure. Yeah, some of it does, and then there's some holes in that that will need to be fixed, like we've been working on getting like professional learning communities, right? So how do we know we're successful with that? We found some good sites that already have that criteria developed and that we'll be able to utilize. The key for us is identifying the people who are going to be the ones responsible for collecting that data, reporting out on that data. And some of it's some of it's quantitative, it's always nice when it's quantitative because it's easier, but a lot of it's going to be qualitative, so that's going to, there's going to be subjectivity with that, but we should have, you know, it will limit the subjectivity. Multi-tiered system support, it comes with, it won't be mentioned or shown within a plan because there are implementation rubrics that are already kind of national set. And so we're utilizing those, nothing that we would create ourselves. And we're pretty at the beginning stages of that. But we have a consultant from the grant that we are part of working with us and she'll help us with all of that. That's a, that, well, MCSSB is huge, that if a district just did that. And that was their one focus, that would be an admirable focus. We've kind of been doing it, the, the elements of it all along, so now this is putting things together. And finding out where, you know, making sure that we're cohesive at this point in time.
So we asked the same question at the education committee, because we had this presentation, we probably even deeper. Um, about success criteria. And I think part of it too is this, like Ruben said, it's a guide, and then when you get into your layers, like your school level and your grade level and perhaps your subject, well, you know, all of those that it'll be more specific, more targeted, and that's where some more success criteria is more easily done, that would then feed upward.
I mean, some simple, some simple success criteria for anything that's academic in nature as it relates to, say, anything that's tested. Yeah, state assessment criteria is in there along with, you know, this conversation around growth. We just have an internal debate about NWEA. So we haven't gotten there yet, and we're just implementing the probably what, you know, Manad, Nock and Keen have done for a few years, and maybe even Conval, but, you know, ninth, tenth grade PSATs. And having the eleventh grade SAT, you know, do that, so we're just, I think we, we, we did it with sophomores, I think we're doing it for freshmen, maybe eighth, maybe even eighth grades. At some point in time, but I think the plan definitely is ninth, tenth and eleventh. So there's some, that naturally just flows out of it. Otis, I will say, I do not have good, just trying to be a jerk. Success criteria, we are developing. That's, that's hard, the, the company does not have. Yeah, we might be able to.
Okay. All right. Just know the comments, then let's move on to the policy.
This is the second reading for J I C L. We first saw it July nineteenth. This this area was lacking in policy. In fact, it referred to the staff and back the policy, so this is a full and fully developed student technology acceptable use policy.
Once this is passed, it will help us by putting the document or reference to that document into our, where the school system, where parents are going to be signing off on different papers and stuff like that, so that's crucial to have it updated. And also in our handbooks.
So if there's no comments, questions, concerns on this policy. It's our second reading. We can get a motion. Thank you, Charlie. You have a second? Thank you, Christine. All those in favor? Posed, staying. All right, so okay, board committee updates. Well, we just heard from policy, I don't know if you are you just working your way through J, is that what you're doing?
We are epically going through Js, like we are boom, boom, but we need to set some time aside because in the next month, you're going to see so many policies and they are going to be great.
All right.
They're almost there, Nick has a ton of work to do, but we are knocking them out, at least for a meeting. Great, like, seriously.
So I, I am currently, over the past couple of weeks, I've been going through all of our policies. We did have a new like template that we created a while ago. I'm now in the progress of literally just going through every policy that we have one by one, converting it to the new template. There's also a lot of metadata things that we need to fix that I'm correcting so that moving forward, we don't have to worry about it. Depending on how much time I have to devote on it, it could take a couple of weeks, it could take a couple of months, because we have, you know, J is obviously a very learned section, we have a couple, but I'm currently working my way, I'm partway through the Cs, I believe. So we'll have everything looking the same, and then we can actually have like a cohesive looking handbook. And then obviously, as you guys bring in more information, we can move those forward.
Great. We have had some glitchiness with the database, sometimes it's available and sometimes it's not. I was just looking earlier and it is not, but, but I, I know it exists, it's just getting to, like, you can get to it, but it doesn't want to open, but I think it's because it's so full, there's just
It's an internal site that was created in-house, so I can talk with our IT department and see if there is ways that we can make sure that doesn't keep cutting out, because I have noticed that as an issue. Another thing we could explore that I'm, I'm currently receiving training on the new website. I have to see if there is a searchable option if we were to bring the policy database into the new website, because that was the benefit of creating the internal website was that we could search policies, I have to see if we can build that infrastructure out in the new website, or if we could strengthen the existing thing that we created, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, so that's the update from policy. Education committee. You just gave a presentation. Do you have anything to add?
The education committee gets the same presentation.
A little bit longer, an hour longer. Few, a few more documents shown, but.
So basically you're seeing what we saw. You don't have the benefit that we had of Susan being there, but she answered some questions, and yes, we did have the same concerns about measurement. Because a lot of things are being done through teams and collaborations and PLCs, and question is, you know, how do you measure team performance? How do you measure individuals on a team?
Okay, all right, well, that's it for updates. I mean, that feels like facilities is a perpetual. I mean, it feels like facilities is a perpetual.
Literally. When we get the locusts coming in on them.
But I.
Although they could just kind of trim some of the.
Well, maybe.
Trees around it, you know. Bushes.
So we have. Next meeting, we'll have some different committee updates. So let's public comments. Round two.
All right, I'll put the policy back up. Just be sure to, you know, read that or be familiar with it before making a comment. Same rules as always, if you're digitally here, use your first and last name and town residence and use that hand raised feature at the bottom of your screen as a way to know that. You want to make a public comment, first, last name, town, residence. All right, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. All right. Any board matters or future items?
It's getting that time of year and I think that we should have a revised organizational chart. Sometime in September. It's hard to know players about the scorecard.
So, so we're kind of future items or?
Well, I, I said either, so that's, that feels like a future item to me.
So along with the long, long-range planning, you'll also receive drafts. By the end of the week of the other handbooks, that we have a couple of weekends to review those. And I think that, you know, there, there will be minor changes in the whole scheme of things, so. We put a few on tonight, but we realized there's a lot of readings.
Yep. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right, thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Patty and all those in favor. Opposed, abstain. Thanks, everyone.